Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the residents, businesses, staff, and friends of the city of Erlanger. Please continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
With that, then, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the regular meeting, July 18th, 2017. Call the meeting to order. I'd ask that we all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Mrs. Hoffman, will you please take roll call?
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Cahill has absolved. He has taken over, taking my husband to an event for men that I could not go to, and he's sitting out in my hair tonight. So can we get this going, moving quick, so I can tell him to enjoy my downtime, and I'm not gonna be...
All right, meeting adjourned.
You may be excused.
Ms. Kyle, here. Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Montgomery.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Mr. Nicely.
Here.
Ms. Fettie.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes for the June 6th, 2017, regular council meeting, and the June 20th, 2017, special council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Fettie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, you've received a copy of the agenda for the July 18th, 2017, regular council meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? I did have one item I wanted to see if we could amend here. In legislation, we've got a resolution regarding the NKY Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. In putting that on the agenda, I had wanted to discuss that, and more so in a council committee meeting. I wanted to see if we could strike that from the agenda this evening and discuss it at the August committee meeting. If there's no opposition there, then we'll take that off the agenda. All right. So seeing that there's no other... Go ahead, if you have a question. What's that? Okay, okay. All right, if there's no other changes to the agenda, then I'll ask for a motion that we accept as amended. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Carried. All right, with that, then, we'll move into the special presentations. Chief, it looks like you're up first.
As chief, one of the most enjoyable aspects of the job, besides just hanging around the guys and still pretending to be a firefighter, is the joy that I get to watch others succeed. You know, I was nicknamed Coach long time ago, and there's nothing probably more satisfying for a coach than to watch individuals that you work with, that you share two-thirds your life with, succeed. And that is what tonight is about. Four years ago, I was announced as the Fire Chief for the city of Erlanger. I immediately adjusted several items within the organization, and I'm sure many of you remember that. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, change is often a difficult situation for many. But a sound leader must be willing to make changes, and in that, I believe, I created the administrative captain positions all across the board. We needed to restructure, find out where we were as an organization. Four years later, I find it necessary to adjust the foundation of the department again, because it is my job as a leader to strengthen the foundation for the future of this department. Succession planning is a vital concept within a strong foundation. The command staff of our organization has to be solid, it has to be knowledgeable, it has to be built for what the fire service future holds. During these past four years, Dave McQuary has positioned himself as my right-hand man. His intelligence, his knowledge, and his ability to conceptualize the direction of our organization are indispensable. He's a calming influence to me and my often very quick-to-react behavior. His promotion to Assistant Chief tonight entrenches the future of our department, and I could not be more proud to introduce our Assistant Chief, Dave McQuary.
All right.
Do you know who that is, Cameron?
Ready to take your oath of office? All right. Okay. I'll go ahead and say it, and then you can say I do at the end.
Your daddy, yes it is.
All right. Is Rhonda Wolf not here? "I, Dave McQuary, do solemnly swear to do my duty as the Fire EMS Assistant Chief for Chief, is Rhonda Wolf...
She is. Did you like to do all three of them? That's fine, that'll work.
the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officer with respect Okay.
Ms. Rhonda Wolf, would you please come up?
I didn't see her there. and dignity, to lead by example, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the Are you guys ready to take your oath of office? United States of America and the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the city of Erlanger. So help me God." Congratulations. All right. So "I, Brian Robinson, I, Craig Stewart, and I, Rhonda Wolf, do solemnly swear to do my duty as the Fire EMS Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention, of Training, and of EMS for the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to lead by example, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the city of Erlanger. So help me God." All right. Congratulations.
I want you three to stand behind me, because you're not getting away without me saying something about you. Craig, looks like you're first on my list, so I'm gonna start talking about you. As a leader, I've learned to surround myself with smart people. Smart people make you look good. This is true. And that's probably the reason I'm the most fortunate and likely happiest Fire Chief in the area. We have a lot of intelligent individuals in this organization, and it makes my job so much easier. It's really not about making me look good, though, or look smart. Both of those are very hard to do. It's about improving this organization, and individuals like Craig Stewart make it much easier. Craig is an Erlanger guy. School system, Fire Explorer, volunteer, and now Deputy Chief. Craig will be leading our Training Division, and this will simply make us a better fire department. He's a welcome addition to our newly formulated command staff, and we are very blessed to introduce Craig Stewart as Deputy Chief of Training. Rhonda, you're next on my list. EMS, it's the largest part of what we do as an organization. Ms. Wolf has been fulfilling this position of EMS Coordinator with the rank of Lieutenant for the last eight years. As the impact of EMS has surged within the fire service over the last decade, Rhonda has been there gaining experience along the way. I believe she understands the importance of EMS. She has an inherent sensitivity for those we serve, and she's an excellent addition to our command staff administration. I believe the realm of fire service EMS will greatly expand within the next five years, and building for the future for this organization is vital. Rhonda will be there to help guide the course, and I'm very pleased to introduce her as Deputy Chief of EMS. Mr. Robinson, the Fire Prevention Public Education Division of the Fire Service is an integral part of what we do as an organization. In Erlanger, we have nearly 600 businesses in which we inspect yearly, not to mention the plan reviews, new construction, requested hazardous survey information, emergency planning with the nursing homes, and so much more. There are a lot of duties that fall within this category, and Mr. Robinson is prepared to tackle the challenges. I threw that tackle in there for you, Connor. I know you're out there somewhere, buddy. It's vital for this position to communicate with the membership of our department, and it's vital for this position to work with everyone in enhancing this part of what we do. Brian has the Erlanger experience, and he has the ability to work within the framework of a team. I'm pleased to announce Brian Robinson as our Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Those are good individuals, ladies and gentlemen. Is it a political season? I'm just, I'm not sure what...
Kissing babies and shaking hands.
We have some more individuals to congratulate tonight. You know, part of my restructuring, and part of what I have changed when I was named the leader of this department, was to instill a promotional process. We put our members through the wringer when it comes to promotions. There's a written test that's created by an outside agency. There's an assessment center, complete with outside and unknown monitors and reviewers. And finally, there's an in-house interview. It's a tough regimen and process, but I believe it to be an integral part of finding the best candidate, while at the same time improving the knowledge and experience of each participant. This year, our guys took it to a new level. It was amazing. The increased confidence shown by those in the process was on display, not only during the in-house interviews, but when an outside assessment center controller, a chief from a department over in Ohio, a large department, pulls me aside and makes it a point to tell me, and I'm gonna quote, "You are blessed to have the candidates that we've seen. You can't go wrong." That's a sign that we have a great nucleus of talent within this department. I'm proud of each and every individual that participated in the promotional process, but unfortunately, there were only room for three promotions. You should also know that in certain areas, there was as little as .50 separating the top candidate from the next. Extremely close. Tonight, we're gonna recognize two of the candidates. Craig Stewart was one of the district chiefs that was promoted, but tonight, we're gonna introduce the shift captain and the shift lieutenant promotions. I'd like Mr. Gottse and Mr. Huth to step up. You can take your oath first, if you'd like.
All right, gentlemen, are you ready? All right. "I, Regis Huth, and Randy Gottse, do solemnly swear to do my duty as Fire EMS Shift Captain and Shift Lieutenant for the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the city of Erlanger. So help me God." Congratulations.
I'll start talking while they're politicking, how about that? I'm gonna talk about Mr. Gottse first. Gaining an experienced firefighter in this region, in today's current climate of retention in our industry, is a very difficult thing to do. We were blessed to have Randy come on board in 2013, having retired as a battalion chief from the airport fire department. His work ethic, his ability to work well with everyone, and as previously mentioned, years of experience have been a true blessing for our department. Now, with the promotion to Lieutenant, our department will rely on him even more to be a member to those, a mentor, I should say, to those less experienced members. And Randy and I have something in common. We both had a lot of sick days when we retired, didn't we? I don't think he ever called in sick at the airport, and I don't think he's ever called in sick here. And to see dedication like that is just something that, it's unfortunately rare, but it's a great quality to have. So I'm very happy to introduce our newest officer, Lieutenant Randy Gottse. Mr. Huth, I just mentioned work ethic, and, well, it kinda carries over into Mr. Huth. You see, Regis spends much of his time making our department better by applying his skills to project throughout the organization. His construction background, his knowledge of any type of hand tool, or power tool, or whatever, and his willingness to participate and to share this knowledge is a huge asset for our organization. We were very fortunate to nab him away from Elsmere in 2011, and that has been a great deal for us, kinda like the Joe Morgan trade, for those of you that remember that trade. We really came out ahead on that. Regis will go from Station 3 as a Lieutenant to Station 1 House Captain, and with it, we expect him to continue his outstanding efforts towards improving our organization as a whole. This department is solid. These folks that you saw here tonight are the future of the department. They make the department. These people are the line officers, these are the ones making the runs, these folks are coming in a very collaborative fashion to form this department. I realize it doesn't please everyone, but I feel good where this department stands today, and I feel really good about the future. And that's one thing I can say, whatever happens to me, I feel like we've created a good organization, a strong culture, and I'm proud to call these guys my family. Regis, I'm proud to pin you, you're captain. Thank you for indulging in my talking tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we're gonna recognize Bob Martin. Okay, Ed Milliken is gonna introduce.
Tonight, Public Works Department would like to recognize Bob Martin for his five years of service on our team. Bob has been a great addition to this team. He's been married now, it'll be three years in September, to his wife Michelle, has got two beautiful young boys, Henry, that is two, and Jack, that's just nine weeks old. Bob, two years ago, was promoted to Maintenance Technician from the maintenance work position after receiving his pesticide applicator's license. In 2008, he received an associate degree in business technologies from Great Gateway Community and Technical College, and he's been a fantastic addition to this department. If there's something that's broke, Bob will figure out how to fix it. He's that kinda guy. He just loves tinkering, and like I said, he's been a great addition, and we look to have him around for many, many more years. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for the opportunity, and we'll see you in another five years.
All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the mayor's report. Have a few things to go through here, briefly. We've got on our agenda a resolution for Senator McDaniel. This was a resolution that was requested by the Kentucky League of Cities to recognize Senator McDaniel in his work on SB 226. It was a bill that helped differentiate the state versus the county retirement system. And he did a lot of work on that, and this is, I think everybody's had a chance to take a look at it, but that's just to recognize him for his work on that. I wanted to mention that the, we've got the, we've had two meetings with the procurement committee. I wanted to let council know that every single recommendation from city council was asked to participate on this committee, and I only had one that refused. There are seven members, and I hope to be able to introduce them to council next month. So, yeah, as you can see, there's a lot on the agenda for this evening, so in an effort not to, well, in an effort to reduce the duplication, I just wanted to mention the things that we'll be discussing, and if for some reason it doesn't come up through the course of reports, other reports, I would like the opportunity to address some of these items at that time. So our admin committee is gonna be talking about the selection committee. Public Works is gonna be talking about the sidewalk repairs and maintenance. We're gonna be talking about the Crescent Springs Police Contract this evening. We're gonna be talking about the Board of Adjustments ruling on Narrows Road. We're gonna be talking about payroll tax incentives, I think. I know Mr. Han is not here this evening, so not sure if somebody's prepared to talk about that. I certainly will be happy to explain what we've discussed. And items that I would like to be added on the agenda for the August 15th committee meeting, we already mentioned the NKY Regional Hazmat Plan, and also I'd like to ask to give time on that, for that meeting, to Greg Fisher, who is here to talk, he wanted to come here to talk to us about a resolution regarding tolls on the bridge. So with, that's all I had. If there's no questions for me, then we'll move on to the reports of committees. First up, under Public Safety, Police, Mrs. Sudkamp, Mrs. Kyle?
I'll go through the monthly highlights before I turn it over to Chief. In the month of June, Erlanger detectives were called to the scene of a large theft from a construction site on Dahlwick. All four investigators responded to the scene, which is one of the largest in scale that the city of Erlanger has ever had. Working together, investigators worked swiftly and efficiently to gather evidence and statements with the help of the job site foreman. Media was notified on scene and disseminated the information to the public before the scene was cleared. All on-scene activity related to the crime scene itself was finished in a matter of just under six hours. Nine cases were closed and an arrest was made. Four cases were resolved within that same month that they were open. Community resource officer attended the Kenton County Alliance and Queen City Club meetings. Poor guy, having to go to the Queen City Club. I participated in Touch a Truck, pardon me, at Lloyd High School, as well as the Honeyhill Petting Zoo event at Rainbow Park. I spoke at three different school YMCA summer programs, where students from grades one through five were learning about public service and police work. I answered questions and helped them with the mock crime scene. For 10 days, I was away on vacation and attended a firearms qualification training day at the Florence PD Range in Williamstown. The department annual rifle qualification was conducted this month at the Florence Police Department firing range. Over the last couple of years, our focus has been to better familiarize officers with the workings and capabilities of the rifle in law enforcement. During that time period, we have seen the skills and abilities of our officers increase. In addition, we worked on reviewing basic defensive tactics and the latest handcuffing procedure being taught at the police academy.
Training, I think Patty handled that on the rifle qualification. We've got an update on BOTO. Officer Clark and BOTO had several notable uses this month. BOTO tracked and located a suspect wanted for assault and robbery in Covington, and he also located drugs in a vehicle in Elsmere, where a suspect was driving while under the influence with children in the car. BOTO also assisted Officer Clark and Sergeant Claire by being present while they removed potentially armed and dangerous subjects from a vehicle. His presence was noted by the suspects who advised, "I don't wanna mess with that." So, he's doing a great job.
I wouldn't either.
And we want to congratulate Sergeant Marksberry, who graduated from the Academy of Police Supervision at the Department of Criminal Justice Training on June 23rd, and also Officer Joel Shepherd, who received the School Resource Officer of the Year Award at the Police Officers in Schools Conference in Richmond. So kudos to both of those. And then the bike patrol. This month, the bike units addressed areas with reported car break-ins and conducted multiple business checks, which resulted in the discovery of several locations with unsecured doors. Officer Riggsby patrolled the city fishing derby at Flagship Park, and Officer Otten and Sergeant Scroggins attended the International Police Mountain Bike Association National Conference this month, where they received advanced training on bike patrol techniques, tactics, self-defense, and administrative issues. Since then, the police department has adopted a new bike patrol policy, which includes yearly group training to ensure all of our units continue to meet and/or exceed IPMBA standards. And then one other thing tonight, we're gonna hear about the Crescent Springs Police Contract later on, and we have Chief Fields in the house.
Chief Wilson, too.
Oh, my, that just comes so naturally, I'm sorry.
Mark, you've been re-promoted.
That's what you're retiring for.
I am so sorry.
I'm retiring again.
the Florence PD Range in Williamstown. The department annual rifle qualification was conducted this month at the Florence Police Department firing range. Over the last couple of years, our focus has been to better familiarize officers with the workings and capabilities of the rifle in law enforcement. During that time period, we have seen the skills and abilities of our officers increase. In addition, we worked on reviewing basic defensive tactics, tactics, and the latest handcuffing procedure being taught at the police academy.
Training, I think Patty handled that on the rifle qualification. We've got an update on Boto. Officer Clark and Boto had several notable uses this month. Boto tracked and located a suspect wanted for assault and robbery in Covington, and he also located drugs in a vehicle in Elsmere where a suspect was driving while under the influence with children in the car. Boto also assisted Officer Clark and Sergeant Claire by being present while they removed potentially armed and dangerous subjects from a vehicle. His presence was noted by the suspects who advised, "I don't wanna mess with that." So, he's doing a great job.
I wouldn't either.
And we want to congratulate Sergeant Marksberry, who graduated from the Academy of Police Supervision at the Department of Criminal Justice Training on June 23rd, and also Officer Joel Shepherd, who received the School Resource Officer of the Year Award at the Police Officers in Schools Conference in Richmond. So, kudos to both of those. And then the Bike Patrol. This month, the bike units addressed areas with reported car break-ins and conducted multiple business checks with, which resulted in the discovery of several locations with unsecured doors. Officer Riggsby patrolled the City Fishing Derby at Flagship Park, and Officer Otten and Sergeant Skrogan attended the International Police Mountain Bike Association National Conference this month, where they received advanced training on bike patrol techniques, tactics, self-defense, and administrative issues. Since then, the police department has adopted a new bike patrol policy, which includes yearly group training to ensure all of our units continue to meet and/or exceed IPMBA standards. And then, one other thing, tonight, we're gonna hear about the Crescent Springs Police Contract later on, and we have Chief Fields in the house.
Chief Wilson, too.
Oh, my, that just comes so naturally, I'm sorry.
Mark, you've been, you've been re-promoted.
Mark.
That's what you're retiring for.
I am so sorry.
I'm retiring again.
At least, people are listening to me, Chief Wilson.
Couldn't even hear back there, I didn't know what you called me.
I never gave you detention in high school, so.
I know.
Okay.
Everybody else did.
Everybody else did. I'm so sorry.
So, we were gonna talk about the Police Services Contract with the City of Crescent Springs. Were they able to get a copy of that prior to the meeting?
No.
Okay.
You're gonna have to hit the highlights.
I can do that. So, the, the contract was negotiated, I thought, I thought we would have copies of it, but the highlights are this. The rate has been set for the previously negotiated amount of $953,000 a year. There are some contingencies that have been added in, and I think one of the highlights is if we go to Kenton County Dispatch and we get rid of our dispatch center, that that would be, that amount would be reduced by $108,000 to accommodate for the lack of dispatch charges that we would incur, as well as a cancellation clause that would account for $100,000 for every year that was canceled before the five-year contract ended. So, if the contract ended at year three, they would pay us $100,000 for the remainder two years that were on the contract. The other parts of the contract are pretty much exactly the same as the previous two contracts, as far, as far as the amount of protection, the amount of officers, and the exact same service that we would provide for anybody in the City of Erlanger. So, that's, that's really, I think, all the changes that we talked about.
I think the only other thing, you know, and just to make it clear to council, I mean, this has been going on since February, the discussions with Crescent Springs. I know a lot of you are familiar with that, but in the most recent meeting, the, it seemed like the two, the two sticking points that Crescent Springs had were about dispatch. So, if, if we were no longer providing dispatch, there really wasn't any kind of clarification in the contract about that, so we clarified that. But also about the, it seemed like they didn't like the idea that we'd have an automatic 2% increase each year, and that was the other part of this.
Oh, yes, actually, the previous contract was, I think, a 4% increase, and that was also reduced to 2%. There were other, some, some other details in regards to CERS, because we found out in the recent days that city's contribution is going to go up drastically next year. It's gonna cost the city another million dollars to provide the insurance, I'm sorry, the retirement benefits to the employees that we, we really can't get out of anyway.
So, so the way the language is, is written in there now, and what the mayor, I think, was alluding to, is we put a caveat in there, instead of an automatic 2% raise every year, that rate of increase would be based on what the Department of Local Government sets the CPI at in every February that comes out. And it doesn't say that it's automatic, it says the City of Erlanger has the opportunity to raise the contract by that amount, or any amount lower than that. But it's not automatic, right?
Yep.
I believe that's the way.
All said.
Yeah. And the reason everybody doesn't have a copy of this tonight is because it's, it's not complete, and Mr. Gallin has been working on this along with myself and the mayor, and there was a little confusion as to the emails that went back and forth between us, so Mr. Gallin didn't get an opportunity to finish that. He will have it very shortly, tomorrow, him and I are going to get together, and then we will forward you all a copy of it. I think the one last thing that we clarified most recently was that we're asked, we're gonna be asking Crescent Springs to make a decision by September 1st.
Yes.
And that is because we're at a point right now where if Crescent Springs decided to go with someone else for police service through attrition, we, we're expecting five people to be retiring in this next year, and so it really wouldn't hurt Erlanger if we, if we didn't refill those positions. But if we don't know by September 1st, you know, we, we need to be able to start, if, if it's gonna be a yes, we need to be starting to refill those positions now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause it takes time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Sorry, Chief Fields.
All right.
It's all right.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
All right, then, next, we've got Public Safety, Fire EMS, Mrs. Pitts, Mrs. Fetty?
Thanks. The Fire Department participated in three trainings in the month of June, first of which was the UC Air Care. It trained all three ships on proper use and landing of their helicopters. Second was a driver-operator training, where the members practiced pump operations via a lecture and a practical. And the third training was a, was treatment of trauma patients, which was a recertification of the department. We want to give a shout-out to the Fire and EMS Department for being awarded the Bronze American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Award. The award recognizes departments for their efforts in progressive treatment of cardiac patients. On June 1st, the City of Erlanger held its annual Touch a Truck at Lloyd High School. Kids were able to climb on apparatus, and they actually got to be able to see the UC Air Care helicopter landing. Then on June 11th, Engine 52, Medic 63, and also the new snowplow from Public Works participated in the Lakemont Community Block Party and Parade. Want to give a big shout-out for that. Thank you so much for your involvement. As far as activity, there were 50 life safety inspections, 245 fire incidents, and 195 EMS incidents. We have two correspondence that Chief Whitaker received that he would like us to read. This one is from Officer Greg Ailer, states, "Chief Whitaker, I want to take the opportunity to express my gratitude for the service and assistance from two of your fire personnel. This month, we needed to recertify our officers in CPR, first aid, and the initial training in the use of Narcan. We had a training scheduled at the Florence Police Department Firing Range, where we would have the opportunity to reach the majority of our personnel at the already scheduled time. I understand this was not the most convenient place to conduct the recertification and training, however, Captain Stewart and Lieutenant Bowe went out of their way to provide the training to our officers at this location. Both their conduct and presentation were nothing but professional, and a credit to your department and this city. Again, I would like to express our thanks to you and these officers for your assistance. This was an excellent example of your department's working together to accomplish the goals of this city, and in turn, provide our citizens with the best service possible. If myself or our department can be of any assistance to you or the Fire Department in the future, please do not hesitate to ask. Respectfully, Greg Ailer."
And the other letter they received was from Steve and Deb Segner. "To the wonderful men of Station One, on Saturday, our RV broke down on our way to Renfro Valley. We made it first to the Church of Christ parking lot, but after waiting four hours, we learned that it would still be a while before our RV could be towed. Since the church has such a small parking lot and the RV was so large, we asked the Fire Department if we might leave it in their parking lot. This was a very, or in your parking lot, this was a very upsetting event, since the RV is brand-new. So, thank you for your kindness in letting us park in your lot. It made a bad situation better. Take care and be safe for your kindness you've shown. Our sincere thanks, Steve and Deb Segner." And then, Chief Whitaker's in the house?
All right, then, next on the agenda is Public Works. Mr. Skidmore?
Sir, Public Works Service Team, they'd like to recommend that the HVAC Service Contract be awarded to Air Force One for the amount of $28,720 for fiscal year 18, and it can be reviewed on fiscal year 19 and 20. We would like to thank Toyota for volunteer for the outstanding work at Flagship Park and at Do Run Trail. On Tuesday, June 27th, the volunteers assisted in multiple projects, and I'm hoping Mr. Viorx can help me on the sidewalk. Anything you could add on the sidewalk?
Yes, the Public Works met with the mayor last Thursday to discuss getting forward, moving forward with the sidewalk program. We have money in the budget for sidewalk restoration. It was decided we would move forward in Zone 1, which is the, is the west side of town between Commonwealth Avenue and Sunset, along with Commonwealth Avenue. And the program is going to be replacement of, will take biz to replace sections of sidewalk that need to be replaced, and immediately follow it up with a grinding process for any of the uneven pavement that's remaining between the sections we are replacing. After we have completed that zone and Commonwealth Avenue, assuming we still have money left in the budget, we will attempt to move into the next zone sometime during this budget year. Unless anybody has an objection, that's the program we're gonna start with.
Does every, does everybody know what the zones are? Or what the definition of the zones are? So, Zone 1 would be from, between Dixie and I-75, from Sunset to Commonwealth? So, that section. And Zone 2 would be from Commonwealth, yeah, from Commonwealth to Kenton Lands, from Dixie to, to I-75.
Basically, where we hit a majority of the sidewalks that service the school system.
Mm-hmm.
So, I hear no objection from anybody, we're gonna move forward.
We don't need a motion for that necessarily, do we? But we do need a motion, Don, if you wouldn't mind, we need a motion to accept the bid from Air Force One for the HVAC Service Contract.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept that bid.
Okay, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Jack asked if their name really is Air Force One. Yes, it is. All right, then, Mr. Bogart's not, not in the house, Mr. Milliken, anything to add?
Yeah, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then next, we've got Administration, Mrs. Skidmore, Mrs. Cahill?
All right. Rental property owners will receive letters in July reminding them to register their rental property with the city. If they've already registered, they do not need to do anything except provide updated information if it applies. Depot Shelter Reservations, they had nine reservations in the month of June, and I think we might, I think Public Works may ask to have some of the rules tightened a little bit on the renting of the shelter houses and stuff. I think there was a couple of problems, not sure what they are, and since Rick's not here, I'll just leave it at that. The Windgate by Windham, which is the only, I think it's the only hotel motel that we have in Erlanger, has requested, well, they've been issued an NQ malt beverage package and an NQ4 malt beverage drink license. Passports, Passports has been a real moneymaker for the City of Erlanger. The post office gave that up several years ago, and that doesn't surprise me. But anyway, the total processed was 67. The total amount collected was $1,675. 835 have been processed in the fiscal year 17, and the total amount collected in fiscal year 17 was $20,650. Code enforcement citations, total collected this month was $10,146.24. And the Historical Museum at the Railroad Depot had 200 visitors this month. And I had a couple of others, I wanted to mention, I don't know if this is the right spot in the agenda, but Kentucky League of Cities is doing their, they're actually reinstating their Government Day program, and we always do, Erlanger always does theirs like in April, but KLC's gonna do theirs in September. They haven't done this since 2006, and they've got a lot of information that they hand out during that time, and I was hoping that there was some way that we could actually take part in, to actually request the information for Government Day and still have our Government Day in the month of April. But we would have their information, 'cause Sherry's been real good, she calls every year and says, "Have you guys got any coloring books or anything that we can utilize?" "No, we don't have anything, we don't do that anymore." So, if they're gonna do it, we'd like permission to ask to be able to have their information, but not do it in the month of September, because it's, the way we do it in April, the kid, the students that go on that trip, they've earned that right. It's a reward, and it's a highly coveted position, and nobody is supposed to be allowed to do it more than once. So, I think, and Kathy's gonna finish, I think.
Okay, we have the upcoming events. This week, it was Tuesday, but now we've got Thursday, 10:30 to 12:00, we have water days. What a perfect time between 10:30 and 12:00, water days. It's gonna be 91 tomorrow, and who knows how the heat index will be. So, it's a program with a partnership with the library, and includes different themed programs every Tuesday and Thursday. The activities are educational, hands-on, and interactive. The Erlanger-Elsmere schools provide free lunches, and the museum and caboose are, caboose are open afterward. And like I said, Thursday, it's water day. So, they had water slides, balloons, sponges with water that the kids were throwing at each other, so that's great. And then on 7/27/17, the Mad Cat Puppet Show, this is outdoor. This will also be at the Depot Park. It's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The Mad Cat Puppets will perform Monkey See, Monkey Do, where there will be no business like show business. The Erlanger-Elsmere schools and the City of Erlanger will provide hot dogs, chips, and water for all children 18 and under. And our, the events have been awesome this summer, and Kim has done a great job in coming up with new events for everybody. And Sherry's here.
All right, thank you. Do we want to talk any about the, the search committee for the city administrator? Do you want to catch people up to speed on?
Yeah, it's in process, and we're meeting again Thursday at 10 o'clock to, we had, there were 52 applicants, and they had narrowed it down to 22. So, we're all reviewing these 22, and then Thursday, we're supposed to choose our top seven to 10, and bring it together to see which ones are going on. We're, it's probably gonna go past Mark leaving. So sad, so sad. No, but we want, this is an important job. CAO of the City of Erlanger is the most important job that we have in Erlanger to fill, and we want to take our time to make sure we choose the right person to take Mark's spot and to lead the City of Erlanger. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna rush it, we're not gonna, we're just gonna take our time and make sure we come up with a right candidate. So, moving on, but it probably will be maybe September, do we say, or October?
Yeah, that's what I would, I would like to think that we could, I could make a recommendation to council at the September meeting, possibly. I'm sorry, not the September, excuse me, October.
October, yeah.
October meeting.
But, you know, don't hold us to it, 'cause we're, we really want to make sure this is filled right.
With, yeah.
Yeah, no, we just don't want to fill it to fill it. We did well there for a while with the department heads leading till we came up with Mark, and we want to take that same time to do this.
And so that, the committee is made up of seven people, and that's Mrs. Cahill, Mrs. Skidmore, as the Administration Committee from council, and then we've got representation from every department, Assistant Chief McQuary, Lieutenant Rader, Ed Milliken, and then Missy Andrus, and then also have Jack Gatlin as part of that.
Chubby crew.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
All right, so thank you for the update there. Okay, then, next, we've got Finance and Business Development, Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you. On June 30, the fiscal year 2017 books were successfully closed and rolled over to fiscal year 2018. The finance staff is now in the process of completing the closing process and preparing the records for the annual audit. And that's all I have tonight, but I understand, Mr. Mayor, do you wish to add something?
I do. I inadvertently had skipped over recognizing Mr. Bodie. We've got an award for financial reporting achievement. This is from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'll give a little bit of explanation of this to everybody. "The Certificate of Advancement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Erlanger by Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. For its comprehensive annual financial report, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment." its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to Steve Bodie, designated by the government as the primary responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. So, Mr. Bodie?
Woo-hoo!
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Do you have anything to add?
Well, since Chief Whitaker has, didn't go very long, so I thought maybe I'd fill his spot. No, I just wanted to thank each and every department, because the award wouldn't be possible without the efforts and their standby readiness for anything that I need for the report, so, thank you to all the departments, appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve. All right, then, next up, we've got codes building and zoning. Mr. Nicely?
I'm sorry, Lord.
Okay, and I know Mr. Han is not here, but we've got, I wasn't sure if anybody else was prepared to talk about the transient housing or the Airbnb's.
I think at the committee meeting, you all said you wanted to further explore that, so putting it on a future committee meeting may be the best course of action, I think that was the direction that the committee wanted to go, so maybe that on the August meeting also. Ms. Pitts is?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Fetty? Yeah. Okay, so putting that on that one.
Now, we've got, we've got the committee meeting report on Cowie and Woodward Properties.
Okay, so, on that one, we had talked, and I think you all took a vote and decided to move forward with the Cowie properties, the way we had decided to move it before your recommendation, was that, to move forward with what we were doing with Habitat for Humanity. However, I do think that there was some discussion about the Woodward properties and whether you wanted to bring it back for further discussion about what you wanted to do about the disposal of those properties. Is that correct? Do I have that pretty much right from the committee meeting? So, I don't know if you want to talk about that again?
Everybody speak a little bit more in the mic, but they get it this way and that way, and you don't hear nothing if you're in the end.
Okay. All right, we'll do our best.
That's everybody now.
Do you want to put that on the committee meeting? Ms. Fetty?
Yes, please.
Ms. Pitts? Yes? Okay. And the other one, I think that Mr. Gatlin would like to speak about the Board of Adjustments Appeal.
I can speak about it, too.
And the mayor?
You want to go, or?
How about you go?
Okay, well, I wasn't sure.
See if I can fill in any blanks.
No, I, so, I saw that the mayor circulated this email, this was really kind of a unique issue, a small issue that popped up with the Board of Adjustments. Dave Han brought it to my attention, and what has happened is there was an applicant on Narrows Road to divide their property, and on one of the divisions, they have an existing septic tank, and they wanted to divide their property and put in a second septic tank, because the position the applicant took, and I have not spoken with the applicant, I'm not sure if Mr. Han has or not, they felt it would be cost prohibitive to connect to the public sewers and public sanitation, because they would have to go through a couple other properties and obtain easements for that. So, Mark Stewart correctly denied their application on the grounds that within our zoning ordinance, it specifically says that any buildings shall be required to tie into the public sanitary system and public water. So, in Mark's position, this is not a discretionary thing, he denied the permit. That individual, the applicant property owner, then appealed that to the Board of Adjustments on the basis of a discretionary act or discretionary language, so to speak, that there would be some discretion in that statute. The Board of Adjustments, as they often do, granted that appeal, and Mr. Han brought it to my attention, because obviously neither Mr. Wickman or myself attend those Board of Adjustments hearings, and said, "Hey, we got a situation here where our Board of Adjustments has granted an appeal on something that just can't be done, our zoning ordinance does not allow it, they're going to run into some issues, most likely, with PDS and potentially the Health Department." So, I sent an email to the mayor as to what our options would be, and I just want to kind of flesh those out, and I thought that at the end of the day, if we are going to appeal the Board of Adjustments hearing, which is not necessarily my recommendation, I felt that that was a decision or non-decision that was above Mr. Han in my pay grade, that it had to be some combination of the mayor or council to make that decision. But I think what our three options are, and this is, again, is a unique situation where we've looked at it, and there's only like five or six properties on Narrows Road in the entire city that would have the situation, so I think option one is, is we could look forward-going, do a text amendment to deal with this issue, and actually give the Board of Adjustments the discretion to do this, because it seems like they certainly have a mindset, if they're going to grant it this time, they're going to grant it again, so we could, by text amendment, change that language. Two, we could do absolutely nothing, we could say, "Hey, the Board of Adjustments has spoken." Fine, they granted this, and go to it, and if applicant runs into an issue with PDS or the Department of Health, that's not necessarily within our jurisdiction. Or, three, we could actually appeal the decision of the Board of Adjustments, which would require us to file suit against the Board of Adjustments and sue them in Circuit Court, and then, in my opinion, we also have to provide counsel to the Board of Adjustments. So, you had, would have a situation where the city would have to pay for an attorney to represent the city against the Board of Adjustments, and for an attorney for the Board of Adjustments, and quite frankly, and I'm going to have this in my report on another case that we had in Circuit Court, courts are extremely reluctant to overturn rulings by things like the Board of Adjustments. Generally, the courts give broad discretion to these citizen groups, so I do not think that we would be likely, even though the language says shall, that it probably was outside their authority to grant this appeal, I don't think we would be likely to prevail in it, and it would be, I think, somewhat cost prohibitive for a septic tank issue on a lot of Narrows Road. So, I just wanted to lay those three options out there, you know, as do nothing, file suit, or we could do a text amendment to deal with this in the future.
We have a lot of undeveloped land in this, in the city, I mean, a lot, and if we open up this can of worms and allow it on Narrows, what's to prevent John Q. from, who owns a little parcel down off of 3L or whatever, wanting to put a septic tank in on his property?
Mm-hmm.
And then, it just snowballs from there. I mean, there's a lot of undeveloped land, I mean, goodness, there's over 100 acres over on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, you know, shame on them, is what I say.
Well, you know, I think one other option to what Jack is saying, it would be, we could also make a text amendment to our ordinance that says, you know, instead of it saying "shall," maybe we could either add, I mean, maybe we could say something to the fact of, you know, "shall connect to the utilities unless it's some type of unreasonable burden," you know, I mean, if public utilities are nearby, they should be connecting into them, we certainly want to encourage that.
Right, and, oh, yeah.
But, if it's going to be more feasible for them to have a leach field, then, you know, I wouldn't want to say that they couldn't do it, because I don't know if anybody's gotten a leach field recently, but the Board of Health requirements are extremely high to be able to get a leach field, I mean, there's a large area that's required, there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through, and it is extremely difficult to get, and I would, I would say I would feel confident in...